We read in the paper this morning that Charlotte County has voted, has banned it, which would leave us to be the magnet, as was quoted by one of the other ones. It's very painful for me to say what I'm saying because I believe so strongly that it should be easily available to people of need as a pain management and appetite management drug. So, at this point in time, I'm still leaving my motion on the floor if somebody wants to second it.
Can I ask you a question, Dr. Lepore?
Sure.
Do you have any idea how many licenses the state is going to give for our region?
At this point in time, no. Not at this time.
Mayor?
The county has banned it because of the local initiatives. They banned it four to one. The reason why it's coming to the local level is because there's an opening for the zoning requirements. We haven't determined the amount of pharmacies that'll be in place, whether they have to be bonded or not, and what the process is. They're still working with the legislature. The Health Department is actively involved in trying to develop the legislation as it goes forward. But at this time, no, I don't. The other question is, for the zoning sections, if you limit one area, how can you limit the other three when you've already permitted pharmacies in the area? I think the legislation as it currently stands makes it very difficult for us to regulate them once they're allowed in. So, you know, really, the decision is in your hands. As DOH, I'm a neutral figure. I'm just here to regulate and make sure that everything is followed appropriately. I do know that, at present time, there may be a 90-day wait period where you'll have to go probably through some kind of medical review to make sure that, you know, the marijuana that's being prescribed for is legitimate. Whether you'll have to be able to get a refillable thing, you may have to go through another review process to see if that marijuana is indeed actually needed for the case. And we're currently working out those circumstances on how to deal with that. I do know we're looking at issuing licenses to those people who are eligible after you've seen your physician and gotten a recommendation for it. And how we're going to regulate that, we're still working on as well. But the decision, again, is in your hands to make that. And I think the way the legislation currently is, if I'm not mistaken, it's whether to allow it locally by zoning laws. Just keep in mind that that medical area is actually the major intake in and out of Punta Gorda. So, that's the first thing people see when they're coming to the city also. The schools are a little bit away. It isn't my concern, really, as the children and the youth in the area. As we know, that, you know, marijuana usage, I come from Colorado, went to school in Colorado, my parents reside in Colorado, and they're going to be relocating to Punta Gorda because of it. So, you know, be cognizant. As a physician, I do see the need medically. That's my own personal opinion. But I think we should be responsible as to how we roll it out.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yep.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
All right. Does this law allow us to place restrictions on how it operates, i.e. signage and type of advertising and any of these things, so that it could simply be clinical?
Not unless those restrictions are identical to the restrictions that they place on pharmacies. I have, I have a suggestion.
Please.
I think, just from a departmental level, if you start to restrict pharmacies, I don't know whether we have the legal authority to restrict. As a council, that will come from the DOH level and the licensing level. You're just, I believe, from the way I understand it, is that you're allowing it in that area, and then the restrictions will come at a departmental level or a licensure. So, I don't know. That's the kind of the game that we're caught in between. If you restrict legally, there may be some objection. There may be some lawsuits as to if you're restricting one over another. And I just want you to avoid that process if at all possible. And I don't know whether we could mount a defense if we did that as a community in the direction if we went that. I mean, I'm not an attorney, but that's my understanding of the legislation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay?
Here's my, here's my suggestion, and perhaps I'm misgauging the nature of the discussion. I hear that there is concern because of what the legislature has done to us in terms of the decision is either to allow them or not allow them. And the decision must be made quickly because if we do not allow them or postpone the decision, they're legally entitled to come in. And by that time, it would be too late to do anything to reverse that situation. I understand that there's concern about if, if these dispensaries are available in close enough proximity to the city so that there is a reasonable alternative, then there might be more of an interest in prohibiting them within the city. If it turns out, for example, that ultimately there aren't any reasonably available dispensaries in our area, that may be problematic for those that have at least some feel for these, the need for these facilities. So, and if we adopt an ordinance at the present time to prohibit them, but determine how long of a period of time we might need to ascertain ultimately whether we would want them to be in the city and treated like pharmacies, then we can put in that ordinance, which prohibits them, a sunset provision, whether it's 90 days, 600, 80 days, or whatever. And that way, if it sunsets, at that point, you can either decide to adopt a new ordinance, continuing to ban them permanently, or react to what the experience has been in the area or whatever additional legislation may occur that may be helping you to make a decision regarding letting them in.
I personally would be in support of that.
Okay. I think that gives us, I think what I'm catching is the sense is that we're asking for a pause to be able to, because we, we want to do this right. And we don't want to jeopardize the community, but at the same time, we want to bring relief. So, I, do I have to withdraw the motion I have right now?
I don't believe there's been a second.
Okay, good.
What was your motion?
That we ban it.
I mean, I don't like, I don't like being put in this position at all. I wish we had a little bit more control.
Well, and that was my point, that I really feel like one of the messages I got from this legislative session, not just on this issue, but other issues as well, that the legislature has, don't really respect home rule. And in general, and I'll just make that generalization. And so, I feel that, at this time, that a ban is the only option that will give us the opportunity to observe and watch and see what happens. And, and then, then we can see, as this unfolds, what does it really mean? And give us time to actually work with our legislators, our legislative delegation, to say, we observed something, and this isn't working for us. We can't, we want to do this, but the way you set this up, we can't. So, it may give us an opportunity to work with our legislative delegation to help change things.
I guess I could support that because I really, with doing nothing, they're allowed in the highway commercial and the city center. So, if we don't take any action, that's, that's what it would be.
Yes.
I don't, I wouldn't support adding the medical overlay.
I don't know if we need the sunset provision. I understand what you're saying there.
I would like it.
It helps bring up that renewal, that period, so it forces a, a discussion.
Yeah.
So, it would force a discussion in another year.
No, not that long. I wouldn't want to go that long.
Well, I would want to wait till after the legislative delegate's session is over.
Because, yeah, the rules aren't going to change. I don't see the rules changing. Now, we could assess who, who, where they're, where the licenses are, where the, you know, the state, the regional licenses, how many there could possibly be in our area, but we have no idea.
I only say that, I'd say something like six months, only because people I know are anticipating late fall to be able to avail of it. And I would think that we would know by then who around us is, has or doesn't have. That's why I would limit it to six months.
But I would want us to be able to then work with our legislative delegation to fix what we're experiencing.
I don't think they're going to fix it because there's an election year.
I mean, limiting the number is really the hang-up for me. That, to me, is, is not okay, for them to tell us we cannot limit the number.
It's a problem.
Yeah.
They are the legislative delegation, and that's what, they're here to serve us. So, I really don't care if it's a.
They're here to run for office. That's what they're.
Limiting the number really bothers me.
I think there's just too many unanswered questions about the whole thing. I think we need to do this, like Gary said, let's do this the right way. When we do implement it, if we want to move forward with it a year from now, totally different story. We'll have a lot more information to work with. We'll have a lot more facts that we can make our decision and have it be a sound decision that could hold up in court. You know, right now, I think, I think there's just too many intangibles.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So, are you asking us?
So, we have a motion. We have a motion.
To?
To ban.
Do we need a second?
Do we need an ordinance?
Could we, if we're going to do the motion, could we have the motion restated, please, and start, kind of start over? Because that, that motion would have died by now.
Do we want to do a sunset on the seat picture?
I don't know. Do we need a sunset, or can we just have it?
I would like a sunset.
Do another year?
Because I, I didn't, I don't want to disregard 70% of our residents.
I, I have a motion that we, we ban medical marijuana with a sunset clause of one year to, to readdress this issue at the conclusions in that state.
I'll second that.
Did you hear it?
Yeah, we need an ordinance. And of course, you know, even with that sunset provision, you can always amend that ordinance to eliminate the ban altogether if that was what your preference was.
Or, or institute the ban.
At the point of sunset, yeah, or even ahead of time.
Or remove, remove the sunset.
Correct.
Or extend it for another, whatever.
Correct.
You still have the flexibility. If things change in the next six months, we still have the flexibility.
Correct.
Okay, so I, we've got a second?
We have a motion, a second. We have a live motion and a live second. All in favor. I oppose. Carry unanimously.
All right. So, we will come back to you as soon as possible with an ordinance to ban with a sunset. I don't, for one year. I do not think it needs to go before the Planning Commission, but we will discuss that and find out so that we can either have it brought back at the earliest, in time for your next council meeting. There's also a possibility that it could be adopted as an emergency ordinance.
Hmm. Is that things?
So.
If it's the emergency ordinance, it would not have to go to Planning Council, Planning Commission.
Would you like to give us some direction as to whether or not you would like to have it drafted as an emergency ordinance to be adopted at your next city council meeting?
Yes, because that's already August 23rd.
Okay. There's also the option of calling a special meeting for that purpose, but I'm just throwing this out.
I think we've heard that they're still working out the details with the licensure, so I think we're okay.
Good.
We have time till August 23rd?
I think it sounds like, you know, they're still in the process of actually.
There are several rules yet to be adopted within that ordinance. I counted seven or eight when I went through it.
And there's a lawsuit as well, so it knows.
All right. So, so we can bring it back to you at the next city council meeting as, as an emergency ordinance. And the value of that is that it can be adopted at its first reading without having to have two hearings.
Okay. Good.
Okay.
All right. So, where, where are we in, as far as the city council votes? They proved the.
Yeah, unanimous.
They gave us the direction. And through a consensus, I guess, it will be coming back as an emergency ordinance.
So, we voted.
Did you?
We had a.
They voted.
On the emergency ordinance?
No.
No. We made the motion.
Do you want to vote on that?
We did.
The ordinance?
I, I just think that we need a consensus, that's all.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
Got it.
Got it.
Got it. Okay, next, we're moving on to the continued discussion of height restrictions in Sitter Sunny, Sitter, City Center Zoning District. Not only do we hear items at July 12th, but we also hear them right at lunchtime, too. On purpose.
As we get set up, I'd just like to make a couple comments before.
Please do.
Our urban design architect does his presentation. In the last couple days, we've had a lot of emails, let's say. And regarding building height and possibly changing the regulations, a lot of the communication that we received talked about, why are we doing this when a lot of folks have left town to go wherever they go when they leave town? Some of the communication was, we're pulling this at the last minute, and that it's new. All of a sudden, we're discussing building height. So, let me just do a brief history of how we got to where we are today. If you do get the weekly report or look at the weekly report, you'll see a brief synopsis of what I'm about to say in it, so that it'll be widely disseminated at the same time. Building height has been discussed since, oh, since I've, I've been here 12, 12 and a half years ago, we've been talking about building height, on and off. And it was part of our land development code. When we redid the land development code in 2005, it's in conjunction with the Citizens' Master Plan at that time. But let's just talk about the last year. Just in the last year, on July 6th, we had an agenda item in front of city council that talked about building height. And we're talking about city center, just the city center. And we talked about, should we revise the code to have differing, varying height limitations with some, some architectural accoutrements and some pedestrian accoutrements? So, this, this discussion started at a public meeting on July 6th. Then, on December 21st, 2016, at another city council meeting, and in December, most of the folks are back from their summer break. So, we do have most of the people back in town. We discussed it again. And we talked about building height. And should we be a little more flexible, along with, if we do, then we need to get some architectural changes, some pedestrian changes, all the types of things that you're going to hear about in the presentation. On January 23rd, 2017, at the Planning Commission, another public meeting, another meeting when everyone was back in town, we, again, the Planning Commission talked about building height, and should we be a little more flexible? On June 26th, the Planning Commission again discussed building height and the land development codes, and whether or not we should be more flexible. Staff made a presentation. The LDR Committee, the LDR Committee is the Land Development Review Committee. That's been in place for, for a number of years. And that, those representatives are members of all of the various neighborhoods in the city. It was also discussed on, on June 16th in front of the LDR Committee, building height. And staff shared their ideas with them at that time as well. During all of these meetings, during all of these meetings, there was never a consensus for those in attendance that we stopped the discussion. Actually, quite the contrary. It was to continue the discussion and to see if this community is ready to be a little more flexible when it comes to amending our land development regulations to incentivize development in our infill properties that have been undeveloped for a long time now in the city center area. So, that is why we're here today. This is not, all of a sudden, come upon us out of the blue. We've been talking about this just in the past year in a lot of different public meetings. So, after discussion today, if city council decides to continue moving forward, we're not adopting one thing today. Not one thing is going to be adopted today. Because if council decides to move forward, we then have to develop the regulations, develop the language. We have to bring it to the land development committee. We'll bring it to the planning commission. We'll bring it back to city council. There will be public hearings in front of the planning commission. There'll be public hearings in front of city council. I know how long it takes for, for us internally to put those, put that draft language together. By the time we get it ready, by the time we schedule it in front of the planning commission and the city council, the community will be full again. People will be back in town. I just know how long it takes us. It's not that we're slow. I just know how long it takes the process to work. So, I have some more comments about our codes after the presentation, but I'll reserve them for them.
Okay.
For the record, Mitchell Austin, good afternoon, Urban Design. In your packets, the entire presentation contains the section that was presented previously to city council back in, in December and to Planning Commission in January. I can walk through that portion of the presentation again if you would like, or I can start with.
I think it's needed.
Okay.
I think we need to refresh the public, who may have, may or may not have been engaged at the time, of what we've been talking about.
Okay. I'll be more than happy to do that for you. So, this discussion, again, the presentation, as we began, is, as presented to city council last, late last year. The city of Punta Gorda does regulate building height in all districts. The heights are limited to between 35 and 60 feet above base flood elevation. Base flood elevation in our fair city can be significantly above the existing grades. So, when we're measured, when we look at a building, the overall height may exceed that measured height per our code quite significantly. We also permit certain exclusions from the building height in certain districts, specifically in the city center district. We allow 20% in additional height for non-occupied space. These may be rooftop amenities, elevator towers, mechanical attics, those types of facilities which are necessary for the, the use and enjoyment of those buildings.
So, Mitchell, real quick, is it the developer, the builders, the owners' decision whether or not to go at grade or BFE, like if they want to do the dry flood proofing, is that simply their decision, based on what kind of building they want to build?
It is their option if they are building a commercial ground floor. And as we saw with the hotel, the, the state has tightened up those regulations where they consider, to us, a hotel is a commercial use to the state. It's a quasi-residential use, so they require them to build that base flood elevation. So, yes.
So, they, they did not have the option?
They did not.
Okay. Thank you.
So, in terms of discussing building height, we are talking about the city center district. That is the area in purple on the image that you see above. It's a very discreet portion of the community redevelopment area, which is less than one square mile of land. So, the, the actual city center district is only a couple hundred acres. Currently, within the city center district, height is regulated both as a minimum and a maximum. The minimum height is regulated at two stories, and a story is habitable space, and 26 feet. The maximum height is 50 feet. And again, we allow those exclusions of 20%, which you could get another 10 feet. In terms of setting height limits in our building, for our city, they varied over time. There's a lot of lore around this building as being the cause celebre as to why we have building height restrictions in the city of Punta Gorda. That legend is false. This, this building was approved by city council under a process that they had in the zoning code at the time of its construction in the 1970s. So, just a brief history. In 1958, we limited in the first zoning code, commercial and industrial uses to no more than 60 feet in overall height. Of course, this is before the FEMA regulations, so there was no mention of base flood elevation in those regulations. In 1962, they had changed it, and they limited building height to 40 feet everywhere in the city, with the exception of all properties between DuPont and Cross Street. That's the area outlined on the map here, which is roughly approximate to the area that is zoned city center currently. In 1981, the codes were then revised again, and they eliminated the exclusion area in the downtown. So, over the years, many buildings have been built that have exceeded those height limits. In the old codes, there was special council actions that could be undertaken. In previous codes, we've allowed additional height by plan development. Under the current code, really since 2005, we've allowed additional building heights through the variance process, which I think the city attorney has eloquently stated is probably not the best thing in the world to do.
I said that.
Yeah. I'm not an attorney. So, we, we hear 50 feet and we think five stories. And 50 feet really isn't five stories in a modern building. In terms of office floor heights, they range finished floor to finished floor between 12 and 16 feet. For retail on a ground floor level, they prefer higher ceilings typically. You'll see up to 18 feet as a, as a pretty standard sort of downtown storefront building height on the ground floor. So, a five-story building, which in our code, we sort of imply that you can get to five stories, is really 70 feet or more. And that's why we've seen these variance applications for the hotel and the medical office building, is because they can't get to where they need to be to make a building work. The example here, this is the, actually, the medical office building at the hospital. Have a little bit of space, base flood elevation. They've got nine feet for their, above that for their parking to get to their first floor. Have a 14-foot story on the first floor, another 14-foot story on the second floor. And the third floor is another 16 feet. Have another eight feet for mechanical loft. This building did require variance, and it's only a three-story office building over parking. It's 53 feet in measured height by our code. So, in terms of how we want to regulate buildings, if we want to provide additional height so that developers can build buildings and fill up these vacant lots that we have in our downtown, we definitely don't want to give them carte blanche. Right now, under the current code, we have zero lot line, so there's a zero-foot setback on any street yard. We have allowances for them to encroach into the right-of-ways, actually, above the, the first floor, up to five feet. So, there are various provisions that can enclose that space quite legally under the current code. But. But, and we really talk about, that's really intentional. We want buildings to address the street. We want them to face the street. We want them to be at pedestrian scale. We want them to have their entrances on the street because we want a lively downtown. That's the way the code was written. That's the intent. And the reason for that, from an urban design perspective, is we want the street to become a public place. We want it to be the enjoyable environment that you want to be in. When the builders of the, of the modern American shopping mall took that move and faced all the retail into the interior of the space, and they said, "What are we creating?" They're modeling Main Street America. They were creating a street. So in terms of building height, we definitely want to establish a spatial relationship of building height to street width. Within the City Center District, most of our streets are platted at 66 feet wide. So that sort of already says we want a comfortable ratio there. We know we don't want to go too tall, or we get in a canyon-like effect. But up to a ratio of one to one is really pretty comfortable in creating a room. The image that you see there, that's actually the Herald Court Alley, which is only a 10 or 12-foot wide alley, and the buildings that flank it are about 14 to 18 feet tall. It's a really comfortable sort of space. On the day that I took this picture, there was actually a professional photographer taking portrait, casual portraits of a family. You know, when professionals that are interested in photography pick your space, they're looking for an attractive space to be in, and this is one. So it sort of fits the model. So in terms of framing the street, the image that you see on the screen, this is Marion Avenue, essentially. This is our 66-foot-wide right-of-way, two vehicular travel lanes, two lanes of parking, sidewalks, street trees. Our streetscape is actually very good. You know, it could be better, but it's pretty darn good. When you put buildings along it, you frame that street, you start producing that room, that comfortable space where people actually want to walk because there's stuff to see and things to do. And we have a nice sort of three-to-one ratio right now with some two-story buildings and some four-story buildings and some five-story buildings, so it's kind of nice. What the code currently allows is this. So, you know, two 50-foot-tall buildings flanking the street. Still going to be pretty good. Pretty nice urban space. But it could be better, especially if we want to grant additional building height. We can make these spaces much better. We tend to have narrow sidewalks. So in terms of the pedestrian experience, what are we really talking about? It's the street, the way the street is formed. It's the buildings that flank it, and it's the sidewalk facilities. In terms of the street, it's really traffic volume, vehicle speed, and physical separation. We have all those three things. We have parallel parking. The travel speeds are fairly low. The traffic volume's a little high on some of those roadways, but it's not untenable. In terms of buildings, we want lots of windows and doors so that people feel like they're welcome into those spaces, sort of visual transparency into the ground floor of the buildings. And we want to have a lot of architectural detail. We want to feel like we're passing stuff, like we're making progress. One thing that we are lacking on for sure is rain and sun protection. Nowhere in our code do we require, request, incentivize the provision of rain and sun protection. If you go to, earlier it was mentioned Downtown Fort Myers. Downtown Fort Myers has its problems. As you come over the bridge, you see these giant skyscrapers on the water. But if you go to the historic nine blocks that is the historic center of Downtown Fort Myers, you can pretty much walk that entire nine blocks without ever getting wet if it's raining, because all the buildings have canopies overhanging sidewalks. So it can be quite nice. Sidewalk. We have lighting. We have street trees. One thing that we're fairly deficient on is public seating and the width of the sidewalk itself. Our sidewalks are quite narrow for a commercial, pure Main Street setting. They average, in some places, actually, they're as narrow as five feet, but they average six to eight in the downtown. And typically, you want to see 10, 12, even wider in certain applications. So again, looking at our, you know, prototypical, this is what could be permitted now. Two 50-foot-tall buildings flanking the street, 66-foot-wide street, no changes to the environment predicated on that construction. If we wanted to grant additional height, and here I'm just showing the addition of an additional story, whatever that building height may be, what could we do to allow that additional height? We could require that the buildings be set back from the right-of-way line. The red line, vertical line there is the right-of-way line. If we require that 10-foot setback, we give them additional story of height, we have the space to have a better pedestrian experience on the ground on that side of the street. So really, in terms of granting additional height, we should be looking for public benefit. So that concludes the original presentation that was given to City Council at the end of last year and presented to Planning Commission and others. So this is the second half of that. Again, reiterating the history of discussion, the labor of that. And again, how we regulate now. On the left-hand side of the screen is the current, right-hand side of the screen, the current code, the 50-foot height limit, the 20% exclusion. We measure from base flood elevation. Deviation is not permitted under a current code. There's no path to getting additional height other than requesting a variance from City Council, from the code. So the proposed regulation would be to regulate the number of stories. And again, we're basing that change from feet to stories because a story is not 10 feet. A story is what a story needs to be, and staff does recognize the fact that we need to make sure that that story definition is written very tightly so that we know exactly what we're going to get, and we are comfortable with it. But that's definitional, and we haven't gotten to that point of detail, that level of detail in this discussion yet. So we have a four-story base limit. Then we could permit bonus stories up to a maximum of eight stories. We would still allow the exclusions to building height so that you could get that required, you know, mechanical attic, the elevator towers, those things that need to be there to make a building work. So in terms of the stories, there would be a maximum height per story, and we would be measuring the story from finished floor to finished floor or to the roof. And again, we would retain the no deviations permitted, so somebody would still have to go beg for a variance, and I don't know how they could get that if this were considered. So again, the base limit, we would retain the two-story minimum and have a four-story maximum. The setbacks would still be as they are in the code today, zero-foot street and sideyard setbacks. Staff does recommend a change to the rear setback provision. Currently, it's 20 feet. We recommend revising that down to 10. The 20-foot setback for non-alley setbacks was a legacy of a previous code upon which this was based. It was probably a mistake that was left in there. Anyway. So in order to get to five stories, staff has presented two options. We recommend retaining two options because currently there are certain building typologies that you could get a five-story building 100% legally under the 50-foot height limits. We need to be cognizant of not infringing upon available property rights. So in this example, the option A, they would be required the 10-foot setback. That 10-foot setback must connect across an entire block face. So a building like Sunloft Center, although it does not connect across the Sullivan Street block or the Taylor Street block, it does connect all the way on, from Taylor to Sullivan on Marion Avenue. So you're connecting across, at least in one entire block face. That 10-foot setback would be required to be dedicated as a public access easement, and the developer would be required the cost of improvements in the pedestrian way, which is standard practice in our current code in terms of wanting to provide pedestrian amenities. It's generally their cost if they want to change the existing infrastructure.
So that would just be open sidewalk space?
Open sidewalk space, yes.
No dining, outdoor dining?
Outdoor dining could be considered, but again, that's a special approval process, that's an additional step. So in this example, the...
So wait, this example, 10-foot setback, and then you still have the 10 in the rear, too?
Yes, yes. And again, on a, on this example, though, when we're, assuming that this building is actually being built across an entire block face, they don't have a rear yard. They have three streets and a side.
So is that all, all three street sides would be a 10-foot setback?
Just the primary. Yeah, the one that connects block face to block face.
Okay. I'm just observing.
I understand.
Gary, Gary's got a question.
I've got a question.
Sure.
What if you have more than one building on a block? Let's say one's four stories and one's five stories.
Again, in order to get to a five-story building under this scenario, the five-story building would have to have one complete block face. So you could have multiple stories on the block in the other direction, but for this scenario on Marion Avenue, they would have to connect from one side street to the next side street.
Okay, so if on a particular block, there's already a four-story building, and there's a vacant lot, like there is at, there's three, those three little lots, you guys own one of them, okay? If there's three lots that are available on Marion, and they would all have to be, have the same setback as the other buildings already on that block, so they would be limited to their height by their setback? Would that be correct?
Correct, correct.
So there would be, at least on each block, a continuation?
So in this option B, we're saying they don't need to do the 10-foot setback. In order to get the additional height that they want for that extra story, they would have to provide a contiguous eight-foot-wide canopy for rain and sun protection. It must cover the pedestrian way, the public sidewalk, and of course, may encroach into the right-of-way. Currently, our code, as I said, does allow encroachments into the right-of-way up to five feet. That five-foot distance is sort of insufficient for a pedestrian cover that provides effective rain and sun protection. So that's why the... So in this scenario, you could have a five-story building on a portion of a block face. But again, the Wyvern Hotel, I guess, being the prime example, that's development by right on what could be considered less than a block face.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The requirement for the rain and sun protection, is that in any way related to any impact caused by the additional height?
Yes, it actually is. As you're getting the rain and sun protection, that, you're creating an overhang, and you're creating a room within that sidewalk, so you don't notice the additional height as it's towering above your head, because you're under that canopy. So it mitigates the effect of the additional building height.
And under these two scenarios, if we're going with stories instead of feet, there would still be a defined height?
There would be a defined maximum per story.
So even though you're saying five stories, it would be such and such feet?
X number of feet, yes.
To the roof.
Correct.
I think that's what people were confused on, thinking that it was just...
They were thinking that it's going to be ambiguous, and they could each be 18 feet. But it would be clearly defined that it would have to be finished floor to finished floor, so it'd still have a maximum total height, even though we're judging it by five stories.
Correct.
And these are just things that you are suggesting?
Yeah, these are scenarios.
Certainly, correct.
Got it.
So that's, and so I was just going to, just make a comment, so if we could write the code where story one could be 18 feet and the subsequent stories could be 12?
Correct, correct.
And we would definitely define, if we went with the rain and sun protection, that would be very well-defined as well as materials, look, just like we do with everything else?
Correct, 100%. So in order to get to a six-story building, you have to meet both the requirements of getting to a five-story building. Additionally, you have to have one half of a platted city block as it exists today. So this is a substantial development site.
Which in square footage, how much would that be roughly?
Our typical blocks are, well, our original platted blocks are 400 by 400, and we, the replats are nominally 200 by 400, but they're 1880s plating, they're less than that. I think the Sunloft Center block is only 186 feet wide.
Okay, so on this scenario, where's your justification for the, for the sun and rain awning if you don't see the additional three stories?
Because you still see the top of, if you're standing on the sidewalk, you're seeing, without that awning, you're seeing...
No, you're seeing, you're seeing the two, you're not going to see that if you're standing on the side store anymore than you would see, if you're standing on sidewalk, how are you going to see the setback additional stories? The two stories that are right adjacent to the sidewalk are going to block your view from the, of the additional stories.
I mean, I would dare say that's, that's the point. Like, I had an office in Tokyo for about 10 years, and in the fashion district, which is like the most expensive part of the city, you, I cannot remember right now how high any buildings were because they did this so effectively. They, I mean, probably they were six-story, I don't know, but they had, your eyes were directed to the street level, and because of this effective use of canopies and setbacks, you cannot see the building height. I've personally seen this applied well. This, the reason why this is there is because literally you're not going to be able to see them. I mean, the business is able to get the space they need to make it profitable, but at the same time, the pedestrians' eyes are not going to be able to see it. It's not going to look good.
My point is, Mitchell's response to my first question was, was a legitimate one. You know, without that canopy, you're looking at, you know, straight up at six or five stories, whatever it is. But in a situation where you... But, in a situation where you only have three stories or two stories, you know, adjacent to the immediate sidewalk, and you're looking straight up, you're not going to see those additional three stories that are set back. So, where's the justification for, for the awning if you're not also going to require that awning for the lower buildings as well?
Well, certainly, we could change the architectural requirements to require awnings on all buildings.
And what I'm suggesting is, you know, you're going to need to make sure that what you're requiring an owner to do is related to the impact that the owner is creating, not simply to create a benefit for the public.
So, again, in this scenario, they're meeting both the requirements of option A and option B to get to a five-story building, and the additional requirement of having a 10-foot step back above the third story. So, that's, and that would, that step back would be along all street facades.
So, if it's next to another building, that side would not be stepped back?
Yes, at, at the side's lot line.
Okay.
But what if we wanted it that way though? So, if we change our, I mean, we could change our code to have it whatever we want.
Correct, especially at the, at the six-story level. But again, we're talking about half a block in this scenario, that they have to be a substantial-
I get it.
-property. It's not, you know, the 5,000 square feet on the corner. In order to get to the seventh floor, again, they have to meet all the requirements of getting to a five-story building, option A and option B, as well as a requirement for a six-story building, and then requiring an additional step back of 10 feet, so a total of 20 feet from the primary facade at the sixth story. And again, to get to eight, in this, the requirements are all the same on the vertical element of the building in terms of having the step backs and the sun and rain protection, the building setback. What you're getting into now is really plan-view elements. So, the requirements would be for a mid-block public access easement across the property from one side street to another side street. That pedestrian connection could be covered in part or in whole, and then it would be developed for pedestrian access. It would have the amenities required for that, lighting, surfaces, architectural detail, et cetera. The example that I used for this is Sunloft Center. Sunloft Center has a mid-block crossing that's publicly accessible. It's not really designated as such, but everybody, lots of people use it. The other element would be a courtyard space, and that courtyard space could be public or semi-public depending on the building typology. It would be required to have seating, landscaping, decorative amenities, architecture, sculpture, pergolas. Those types of elements could be written into the code conceptually. And that space would be some portion of the building lot area. The courtyard could be moved in space. In the Sunloft Center, it's immediately in the, in the middle of the building. It could be pushed to the rear if it was a residential building or residential mixed-use building. It could be pushed to the street if you wanted a nice outdoor dining space along the street front. So, there could be many advantages to the developer for that courtyard space as well as a great public amenity for the city. And today, that is what staff has developed.
Do you have your hand up?
So, I know we're talking building height, and the City Council needs to direct us, A, to stop it, to stop talking about it, or if you want to continue pursuing this, we can spend some time now putting together some draft regulations that we would run by, obviously, various committees and whatever, and continue the conversation. Now, that's all part of the land development code in the city center. There is some other parts of the land development code in the city center that we're struggling with. And we have some developers that come to us on some other properties in the city center, and they're struggling with whether or not they want to comply with-